So call the meeting to order. 402. We have the regular meeting minutes of February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Make the motion to a point or to approve, I'm sorry.
I'll second it. Eric made the motion, Vinnie seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both. So move. Okay, ARPA discussion. At the last ARPA meeting, they came up with a list of projects. And members of the committee put them in order of how they felt was the most important to the least important. And that's what you have in front of you. I just got this clean list from Rick. I think yesterday afternoon. Yeah, yesterday afternoon. So with the available funding, can probably do the top eleven way they are. That's how much money we have left after the excavator. So I think maybe our next step, see how you feel about it. We could have a little public forum on this to get some public input. I mean, we did have a pretty good mix of committee members, but I think there's obviously more voices that want to be heard. And we could set a date for that.
Do you, are you suggesting we give the like the whole list? Or take input on different things? I mean, that seems like maybe going backwards a little bit, so. Give them the top fifteen, like?
You could probably go there.
Okay.
And, you know.
Take feedback on the on the top fifteen, and if people have a real strong argument to reconsider, you know.
Yeah, I mean.
Number twelve, for example, you bump it up.
Vinnie, what do you think?
My thought was always to take care of nonprofit organizations for money to COVID, whether it be the library or the Beecham Rec or whoever. And that was my priority, but that's only me speaking. I'm not speaking for the group. But I think you're absolutely right. We should have a public, some kind of public input.
See you.
For us three, after this group made the decision for us three to make a decision, I think we really should have some input. And like the fire truck. Okay, we know there's a need for a fire truck. We've known there's a need for a fire truck for a while. All right. The question is, how do we pay for it? I mean, the two hundred we have here is fine, but it's still short. I don't know what a fire truck, say four hundred thousand. I don't know what it goes for, five hundred thousand, whatever, whatever, but I'm saying we have to figure out where that money's coming from.
So in terms of the ARPA, like a public hearing on it. I mean, we all have our personal views on what we like on this list or don't, and and I disagree with you about the nonprofits, not because I don't support them, just because I think there were other money funding opportunities available through COVID for them. But in terms of the meeting, like everyone has their own opinion.
Right.
So I think in order to eliminate chaos that we need to here's the list, or here's fifteen things that we decided we have X month, like we need to kind of shorten it just so it doesn't, because everyone's going to come with their own ideas. And unfortunately, it's too bad, but we can't satisfy everybody. So I suggest saying here's the the committee came up with a top fifteen, an explanation of the top fifteen and
Yep.
and go from there. And we can explain the ranking that the committee came up with. And if anybody has a strong argument for it, you know.
I'd like to get, you know, at least try to get some of those committee members there.
Yeah.
To be able to answer any questions of their reasoning, maybe perhaps, or what was explained to them regarding each project that's on the list. I, we could do like a Saturday morning, could do evening, like a Wednesday evening or something like that.
I would rather do an evening than a Saturday morning.
Something like a seven o'clock on a evening would be okay.
It would be best for people that are work at home.
Yeah.
Well, we could.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that that's probably the best thing.
You want to try for the sixteenth, maybe? If the sixteenth works, doesn't work, we go the twenty-third or something like that for March. I just have to clear with the town clerk, make sure there's no conflicts.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or could we do it on the, well, no, it's our meeting is at four thirty. It looks like we do it on the fifteenth and just make it part of our meeting.
It's a little early for a lot of people.
Sixteenth sounds great.
All right, I'll try for that. If not, we'll go like the twenty-third.
And as many people as the can come from the committee, I think is good. And the three of us there, too, I think is good. As many people from the committee can come and the three of us, I think it's good because this isn't any one person's proposals, and I don't think it should look like it is.
I think, you know, Ben Solna kind of put it best at the end of the last meeting. He says, you know what? We've done our work as the committee. You know, we can't keep going back and keep going back. Here's what we came up with. Let's move it to the board of selectmen to get the rest of the input that they need. So. All right, we'll do that. And March sixteenth at seven, if possible, if not, the twenty-third.
Okay.
Thank you. Refunds and abatements totals ninety-six hundred eighty-nine oh eight.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Was made in secondhand discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Both. So move.
Two pages on this.
Different sets. I got them in groups.
Oh, okay. Yeah, there's the two pages. Three, seven, twenty, and the fifty minutes, six, five, oh wait. And sixty. Appointments, we have a couple appointments. I was approached by Connie Trolley. She know, learn there's an opening for Bayonne Lake Authority. Currently, we have Pete Longo and Scott Popbecker on there. There is one opening for Morris, October first, twenty-one to October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll point Connie for that.
Connie wanted to get on it?
Yeah, I'll second that. Okay. Any discussion? They'll fill out our Bayonne Lake Authority, they had a meeting already. They hope to have another one in April, I believe. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Next one is Ben Pletzky for ordinance committee to continue, and that's a term of three, one, twenty-two to two, twenty-eight, twenty-four.
I'll make a motion to a point, Ben.
I'm not going to second that. Okay, I'll second it. Any discussion?
I'd rather not.
Okay. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Then you abstain?
Yeah, I'll abstain.
Okay, any abstains? Thank you. CPACE, well, I was hoping hoping that our board of finance would have a meeting. They haven't yet. They canceled tonight's meeting. They were supposed to review the CPACE agreement. It's just the kind of a review to see if there'd be any financial impact to the town of Morris. Did get a response from the insurance company on the agreement. They didn't have any real issues with it. We did get a response from CPACE. There are about thirty-seven properties that could take advantage of the program in the town of Morris. So really waiting for board of finance review. Hopefully, they meet next Thursday, have a chance to look at it.
Was that the what Wendy was interested?
Yes, yep.
Did you have any paperwork or do we have any paperwork? What what this is all about?
Did I give you?
We had something handed out, yeah.
Yeah, the agreement and resolution at the last meeting.
Okay.
Oh, that you weren't here in person, right?
No, I wasn't in person.
We can, I'll get that to you. So we have another week and a half to look.
I just wonder what what it is.
It's really a funding mechanism.
Through the town?
Well, the town, in case, say, they default on the loan, there's a way to place the lien on the property through the town. That's really about all it does anymore. It used to involve the tax collector's office quite a bit more, but they've kind of gone away from that. So it's really just a way that they can collect in case there is a default on the loan.
Now, does the town sponsor this?
Town has to accept it.
Okay.
And you can't accept it for one property. You got to do it for any property that can take advantage of the program.
So the board of finance has to look at it to see what the impact would be?
If they feel there'd be any impact financially for the town. And like I said, the our attorney looked at it. Insurance company, tax collector, and they don't have any issues.
Okay.
Program. So and Rebecca does deal with this in Canaan, I believe, and she hasn't had a problem up there. Okay, so next, hopefully, next meeting, we can get that moving. So Wendy can get moving on their solar project. Budget review and approval. I just kind of got to this, wrapped it up as much as I could today. There's still some unanswered questions out there. I met with Rob Ebner and Kyle Rosenbeck earlier this week about capital projects. And okay, with you, I'll kind of go through this.
Yeah.
And no any changes. There have been some increased asks this year. Probably some of it's due to increased costs, whether it's energy or product or whatever. Capital now recurring. Have the right one here. You'll see five eighty-six. That's because list of projects on the capital page are all totaled up, and that total ends up there. So when we get to the capital page, that could change if you take projects off or add projects. Bayonne Lake Authority jams, just keeping a placeholder there for fifty dollars. They are going to be active now. They do have money in their account already, so they should be good for this year and next year. Contingency. We do not have a contract approved yet for the union, so we will have to have something there probably for when that does get approved. If it gets approved before the budget gets approved, we'll have the numbers in the budget. Sandy Beach Commission, the same. Morris 401K contribution, that is the new program. It's not a 401K, was it 401? A or? Can't remember the number.
Five oh one A.
Something like that. But that's what we are contributing to the people, the newer employees that are taking advantage of the retirement program. Emergency service personnel pension, Morris, that's the Morris Fire Company. There's the old pension for the volunteer fire department. Town of Morris pension, significant increase there due to an employee retiring. I believe probably the board of finance will have Mary Skelton come in to talk about the increase. You know, why is that much? Bayonne Lake, we control education. I think we're about thirty-five thousand dollars less than last year for the education costs. Any questions on?
What is that noise? Tax collector.
Oh, they're a tri folder?
Yeah.
Why they shut the doors?
No, this was like, it's just a strange noise.
Board of Finance, no real change. You know, it's going to be a tight budget, and I believe their assessor or their auditor only costs twenty thousand a year. I I just threw in twenty, those, of course, they can change if they feel there's a need. But why have the extra two thousand in there if they're not using it? Board of assessment feels, I talked to Betsy about this. She said, keep it a thousand as a placeholder. Fire Department, Rob is here, and none of these have any, we put in the last year's wages. We did not add anything to any of the wages. Wanted them in there so we could show what the bottom line was at the end. So fuel, same. What's the big differences? Supplies went up a little bit. Access maintenance went up a little bit. And again, it's just increased cost from the vendors that you have. Things are not going down. They're going up rapidly. Truck maintenance, also the same. Radios and pagers up slightly. Truck equipment gas, we are finding that using the utility a lot more. I had a lot of guys going for training up at Belleville and other places, too.
Dive school.
In the dive, yeah, dive school. We feel there's enough in truck diesel to get us through the probable increase in diesel costs. And is there anything else, Rob, that was noticeable?
I don't think so.
Excellent. I'll increase. Any questions on fire department? Fire marshals, exactly the same as before. Beach and Rec, the increases. They approved fifty-six, fifty-five last year for summer salaries. Were about fifty percent due of usage on that due to how rainy it was last year. A lot of times, they didn't go to work. But if you figured all the hours for every weekend and holiday, it is sixty-five hundred and twenty-five dollars. I feel felt that we should fund it where it should be instead of underfunding it. Whatever you feel is fine with me. I'm sure the board of finance will take a look at it as well. Trying to see if she had anything else.
Concert.
Concert. She did ask to increase that. There is an increase in the cost of the bands now. They've gone up. Given the overall budget, I'm a little concerned that as we increase two thousand here, two thousand there, we're going to start, we're going to be feeling it. Support of finance took three hundred and thirty thousand last year, the fund balance, to keep the mill rate lower. And start seeing the payback on that. Again, if there's any, if you feel we should bring that up.
Well, the only thing we have to watch is we keep taking from the fund balance
Yeah.
to keep our taxes down. Sooner or later, our fund balance is going to be low, and
Yeah.
we need the money, it's not going to be there.
And when you don't have the money in the fund funded balance to put towards the budget to keep the mill rate low, then your mill rate is going to skyrocket pretty quick.
I'm all for putting that, keeping that concert number in there, if that's what she thinks that she needs and letting the board of finance like do the bottom line for that. But that said, it would be nice if, I know so many, so many people do enjoy the concerts, doing a little more fundraising, maybe there to make them pay for themselves a little or cover the increase in the cost of bands, I guess.
Yeah.
You know, because every year, and it's gotten more expensive every year, and I, people do definitely like them.
It was pretty much her major increase. Vinnie, what do you think?
I like the concerts myself. I think it's something that the townspeople enjoy. I'd rather cut something else than concerts. I was always a a fan of concerts. I mean, I know sometimes people do sponsor a concert. I don't know if that's happened in the past couple of years.
Yeah, the reading room does the
I know the reading room did one. I know the fire department did one one year. I don't know if that's still happening or not, but maybe that can offset some of the cost. But I would keep the money in there, and if they do get some sponsorship.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah. I think they should, yeah, they should maybe try a bit more on the sponsorship.
But what we have to remember on this whole budget, this is a draft that we're putting together. And we can vote to put this to the board of finance. But they have, they have to review and they'll call whoever they want in, just like they do every year. So we can make the recommendations, but ultimately, it comes down to the board of finance.
Well, it comes down to the taxpayers who vote on it.
Right, at the end, you're absolutely right. Yes.
Library. Let's see. Again, did not do any increase in any of the wages. They're looking for. So what happened in twenty-one, twenty-two? They were they received seven thousand. They came to the board of finance for a transfer out contingency to get it to nine thousand. So they end up with nine thousand dollars during the year on that line item for library books and magazines. This year, they're requesting twelve thousand. Given that these days, I'd kind of like to stay at nine thousand. They do have their own funding out of their library monies. They're expecting to spend about six thousand dollars out in addition to this line item for books and magazines. My thought.
I agree with you on that.
And they'd also, rest of it stays the same. They did had thirty-three eighty for digital resources, which is here. Kupla Digital, I need to try to bring this down. That's probably too far. Yeah, so they're adding this digital media, digital resources. They're also expecting to spend, I believe, about eighteen hundred dollars of their own money towards the digital resources. So they're looking kind of a big increase there. I mean, if you go with the thirty-three hundred plus the three thousand, so you're sixty-three hundred additional monies in the budget.
I mean, if you're looking at increases for the library, like I'm a librarian, but I certainly would be more enthusiastic about putting money into the digital format than the books and magazines. Based on, I think that's the direction that every library is headed in and use and whatever.
Yeah.
What does the library do? Like, if you're spending nine thousand dollars plus six thousand, whatever, on books and magazines every year, like, where are they keeping them? Like, do, I mean, I guess, obviously, but like, do they get, do they sell them? Is there a book sale at the end of the year? Like, they have to be getting rid of some to make room for that many books, I would think.
That is a lot of money in books every year, and they must go through the stacks and filter out what is not being looked at regularly. And where do they go? They, I know when Zoe was here, they were shipping them off someplace. They'd box them up and ship them to an office in another country or what it was. It's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money. It's a lot of books for that money.
You know, fifteen thousand dollars. I kind of agree with the electronic part of it. People are definitely utilizing that. I'm not really.
I'm not either.
Yeah. I mean, I take out a few books a year.
I have to, I have to have it in front of me. I can't even read the newspaper on online.
It's a lot easier with it. The older generation.
Yeah.
I use like digital exclusively.
Yep.
All the kids, I mean, that's how all their schoolwork is, and I think anyone younger than me that's going to utilize the library is going to want a digital option, I think.
And you have to remember, this is another group that their fundraising was impacted. So you know, they were asking for some money in here, and maybe that would offset some of the books or whatever their whatever their needs are.
They are looking to spend, use more of their money this year than they have in the past. So I guess their accounts did better. Their library funds, they have separate investment accounts, so they must have done. Okay. I have all the numbers in front.
Till about two weeks ago.
Yeah, right. I don't know what your pleasure is there. Put it towards the digital resources and maybe not so much on the
That's my preference.
Yeah, I'm fine with it. Thirty-three eighty. Here is one place, this number did go up a little bit. It's just because he may be increasing his hours. It doesn't mean there's increasing wages at all, but that's what they fear would be good enough for the zoning enforcement officer to cover his hours. And it's usually falls far below that because he doesn't do all the hours. I think it was much else different. Oh, they did go down legal. They have hopefully cleared a hurdle. Who's that? Planning his own and planning zoning. ZBA is still going. That's another one. But planning zoning feels this should be good for them in the coming year.
I hope so.
All right.
I I don't feel like that could be possibly be reasonable with the amount of things that they ask Stephen Burns for, which seems like five questions a meeting. That alone, without anything
Yep.
even coming up, is going to hit five thousand. So I don't think that's an accurate.
I don't think that's enough money.
Not at all.
I think there's a lot of stuff coming up.
Well, and they ask him so many questions that frankly, there are free answers for, but through other resources, and maybe they shouldn't ask them, but they they, he, they go to Stephen for everything.
I think perhaps the board of finance should bring in the chairman and Tony and say, hey, are you sure this is enough?
For for the board of selectmen, can we like put an asterisk there and suggest they do that? Maybe look over what they have spent in the last year, because I, I think we all are in agreement that that's not enough money.
Well, just look at the the topics they're discussing right now.
I mean, I just look at, yeah, even
Five thousand dollars doesn't go a long way with a with attorney.
No.
The makeup of the board is they're very new and they're looking for you know, reassurance on their movements, I think.
Okay. The other increase, I agree, I five thousand doesn't go far. The other increase is for the planner. They are utilizing the planner. I probably at least once a month, plus with her hours outside of the meetings. And they are looking at a lot of regulations. And they felt eight thousand would get them there. Their tax collector is really not much here. I think she had increase in training. The assistant tax collectors going through certification. Professional development went up. I think that's it. Right? Eric can see that better than me. Yep. Treasurer, I think there is that much of a change, no change. Just like, oh, it went down a hundred.
Excellent.
Always nice. Board of Health. They went down two hundred. It's been, the V and A, we haven't seen a lot of usage for the V and A. I don't know if it's a change from, was it based in Litchfield that went to Winston? I think, and we just don't see the usage in town this year, this past year. Inland Wetlands stayed the same. ZBA. I was hoping they're going to be done with this case, but it sounds like they're not. Not yet. So they are keeping twelve thousand dollars in there for legal fees. Rest of it is stayed same.
Same case. That's what I'm going on for.
Yeah, it's been a few years now. Town clerk, I believe she stayed the same. And again, no increase is shown yet for wages.
Tom, when you say there's no increase in wages, you said the union Tom, when you say there's no increase in wages, you said the union contract is up?
It's up June thirtieth.
Oh, are they looking for an increase in wages?
We don't know yet. They haven't uh had their meeting to get together with their ideas to present it to us. Yeah.
So typically when the union gets a raise, the week it raises to our employees.
Honored that, yeah.
Yeah. So all these wages may have to be adjusted as soon as we find out what the contract or what we want to do.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, they will have to be adjusted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's.
Definitely.
Okay. It generally, it's not a huge number.
Right.
Altogether, uh, we have to figure in the taxes and such, social security, all that too.
Okay.
Certainly, it's not a huge number. Assessor, she did have to go up. I think, I can't remember if it was for Vision or one of the uh. Vendor she uses uh for cloud storage, uh, a thousand dollars. In fact, there's Betsy right now. What was the uh, was that Vision for cloud storage on your budget? Yeah.
We were supposed to have it from, when did we go through reveal? Or when did we convert to Vision eight? It was like twenty twenty. And she called me on panic. We don't have a, we don't have a contract with you for cloud storage. I was like. Well, you're storing our stuff on the cloud, right?
Yeah, hopefully.
So they allowed us not to have to pay this one and then we have to do next one.
Yeah.
I said, I can't go back to them if it's not budgeted for a thousand dollars. I can't do that. The town's too small for that. Nice. Okay.
It works.
Alright.
Thank you.
Yes. Sorry about that. Makes my budget look like you give me a lot of money.
Fuel, I went up five hundred dollars. Uh, propane has gone up a bit and we are definitely using it here at town hall.
It's so warm in here.
Working my coat every time. Electricity, uh, we're doing okay on that. I felt even with the increased rates for electricity for the distribution. We can go down five hundred dollars. So we kind of washed it there. And is that it? I believe so. If there's anything major here. Yeah, uh, file server maintenance. It's become such a, an issue now with uh cyber, cybersecurity. And the attacks and even just in the past two weeks, the increase in attacks. And they're not just hitting Hartford and Farmington. They're hitting even small towns. I think Woodbury got hit a couple of years ago. So working with our uh IT company, he's added some. Uh, software that's going to help. With this, uh, the last one, we're just adding just yesterday. It's a spam filter for email. That's where most of the attacks come through and municipalities like this, someone clicks on the wrong link. Thinking it's okay and. Locked out. Also, we'll probably institute a two factor authentication for sign on. Doesn't help when you try to read it.
No.
And this is all leading up to getting cyber insurance for the town. You can't get cyber insurance without having a number of things in place. And so it's going to cost us money to disqualify for the insurance. Then it's going to cost us money for the insurance and the price for insurance is probably doubled in the last two years. So I'm working with our IT company. He feels we're pretty much there except for uh the two factor. And we should qualify for insurance. It's amazing what you have to do. And he says, not everything the insurance company asks for makes sense, especially in a small town, but. So that's why there's an increase there. In fact, Laura and I were looking through our email accounts to make sure we don't have any extra accounts that we have, we're paying money for. We are going to probably delete at least one.
Two.
Two, just not being used. So why have it? I mean, it doesn't amount to a lot, but every little bit.
But Tom, these are things that we have to have.
Yeah.
I mean, whether it's an increase, this is something that we, we have to do.
Oh, yeah. So if we don't.
If we don't, it's going to cost us more in the long run.
And if you do, you'll never use it.
Yeah, but having a general, the insurance that is there.
Right. Don't think employee training salaries. Computer support. Town council all stays the same. The slight increases from like probate court. Uh, health insurance, a slight increase, four thousand dollars. And we didn't see an increase last year at all. So it's not too bad. Anything on general government? Or to health? I think we went down slightly in torrential air health department. Mental health, we haven't been using it. Uh, it's there. Hopefully they get active a little more again. I did receive letters from Susan B Anthony fishing Greenwood's. Uh, that's reflected in department requests. They're always asking. Depends, like last year they asked for five or to finance at twenty five hundred. I think they are on the ARPA list. Did they make the top? So. Maybe, you know, their third. Maybe Board of Finance will say maybe twenty five hundreds enough in the budget and give them, it will give them what's on the ARPA list. Uh, they're definitely getting hit hard, doing a lot of counseling and referrals. The opioid pen, so.
Epidemic.
Epidemic, yeah, is really hitting Northwest corner pretty hard. A lot of overdoses and deaths attributed to overdoses. It would be good, I think, for the board of finance to have. John Simon selling, I think, come in and talk to them because I don't think they quite understand what Greenwood's does. And how many people they uh help in this, the town of Morris, so. Let's see. Oh, highway salaries, salaries. And I'll have to circle back to uh. I think it's general government. Uh, the maintenance of town properties, but. You'll see. The seasonal wages from sixty four hundred to twenty three hundred. They're looking to use a seasonal, seasonal, seasonal person to help with drainage work they're doing. Uh, traffic control, have someone who's certified as a flagger, saves a lot of money from trying to get a company to come and do flagging for like east shore road drainage. Uh, they're also looking at taking over the lawn mowing here in center town. And that includes the firehouse here next door, all the mowing and the trimming. Hopefully have a seasonal person be able to take care of most of that. The reason I refer back to the uh. Where it was normally funded out of the maintenance of town properties, we're not going to see any decrease in that. Uh, what we found uh even so far this winter, we're probably about five thousand dollars, uh, four thousand dollars in snow removal for. The sidewalks, the firehouse, yeah, for here and there. Just the way the winter has been this year. It's been crazy.
So when you go back to the mowing.
Yep.
You know what it costs you to hire a contractor for a mowing?
It was about thirteen thousand dollars.
So that offset. To show for the seasonal help.
Well.
Mowing.
Yeah.
I mean, that's how you have to present it to the board of finance because if you're saving thirteen thousand.
And that, that increase is not very much if you look at it that way.
Right. That's what I'm saying. So. Just to say that we're increasing the seasonal help without saying that we're saving it on the back end of it.
Well, the only problem we kind of came into with all that is we were using Mike Burke for many years.
Right.
Who gave us a great price, uh, much better than we realized. And so when we did the budget last year, we kind of figured it based on, based on his prices and adding some. Well. Last year was a great growing season for grass and uh they mowed every Monday.
Yeah.
It got mowed. So far this, well. And on top of the mowing, you had the spring cleanup, the fall cleanup and the heavy pruning they did around town hall. The spring cleanup, fall cleanup and pruning is fifty eight hundred dollars alone. That's something our town crew can't do. They're not qualified or trained, you know, to do. And they don't have the equipment for some of that stuff. Uh, so that's fifty eight hundred dollars. So far this year with the snow removal for the sidewalks. Uh, thirty three hundred and thirty dollars. I don't think I have the last bill in there. And so we could probably end up around five thousand for snow removal. So between the two of those, that's uh ten thousand eight hundred dollars in maintenance of town properties. I have twelve thousand in the budget. We're over on that line item already this year, but twelve thousand. Because of the, all the mowings, you know, all the ice that we've had this year in the winter. So I was trying to keep twelve thousand dollars there next year to take care of the spring, fall and the pruning and the snow removal. I wish there was better savings, but the price is just crazy and you don't know what the, what the winter is going to be. Yeah. I mean, we're looking out this year so far. Well.
Not in terms of sidewalks and stuff, it's.
The problem this year so far has been that almost all the storms have fallen on weekends and holidays. Which really hit our overtime budget. For highway. Well, let's see. Emergency overtime. Well, they have forty six hundred dollars left when this was printed on yesterday. Which wouldn't go too far. Maintenance of town properties, we have sixteen dollars and twenty eight cents left. So. I don't think it includes slash check run. The costs have gone up. Not much we can do. Try to do our best. So it's going to be probably a question with the board of finance. What do they want to do? Continue with hiring an outside company to mow the lawns here in center town or have a seasonal help do it? That's a good discussion for Kyle and Board of Finance.
Right. Well, that's what we have a board of finance for. That's those questions and. What about contingency now at the end?
Well, that's up to them too. You know, what they feel based on. How tight the budget is, what they feel they might need to keep in there. I think last year it was sixty. I can go back and look, but.
So I mean, if they get in a bind, can they pull from content at the end of the year?
Yep.
That's an option for them. Oh, yeah.
Uh, some other increases in highway, I believe chip ceiling probably went up due to. Increased cost of oil. Chip seal. Yeah, from ninety thousand to ninety seven thousand. I see what else was. Big increases there. He did go down on uh sand and salt. We don't use a lot of sand and they have quite a stockpile of it over there. And they felt forty two thousand, dropping eight thousand was good enough.
But what's it do to our calcium?
Uh, he feels there's enough uh salt and they treat the salt uh on site. To cover it. Biggest problem with salt these days is getting it delivered. They got a, a delivery this winter and it was large clumps of salt because it's been sitting outside full of moisture and all that. And it takes two to three weeks to get the salt. So it's been an issue and that's going to come up in Capeland recurring. Salt shit. Loa sip, uh, I think we're expecting like twenty one thousand and change uh from the state for Loa sip this year. We talked about the generator for here. The low bidder could not come through with the generator. So I'm talking to the next lowest bidder about looking at their bid and seeing. What they can do, but they'll probably be around forty thousand dollars and. That's going to eat up a good portion of our Loa sip funds, so.
The problem may be not, not the, the price of the project is getting the material for a project.
Could be.
Because uh. Dave Roberts mentioned a panel would be almost a year away.
Oh, meter can is, yeah. You can't get them. Certain product, uh, things you products you can't get. Uh, and this going to insurance liability, this is where you'll see an increase due to cyber insurance. This is based on projection by the uh insurance company, what it might cost us. So we went from eighty three thousand to ninety eight thousand on insurance. That eighty three covers uh. Liability, auto property. Property, auto build and work with Scott. Miscellaneous selectmen. I don't think there was a big change. Uh, rural transit that did go up, I guess significantly. But there hasn't been a change in that amount in fifteen years. And they got a new executive director up there. It was really starting to look at things and realize. The transit company is not bringing in enough matching funds to receive the grants that they need. So they have to increase their. Ask to the towns to get to that level where they can qualify for the grants. So we did go up to twelve sixty seven. I did ask them that we need to have more of a presence in town. A lot of people have no idea that Northwest Transit serves the town of Morris. Although senior center does, they utilize it quite a bit. They are in the midst of doing a rebranding at Northwest Transit.
If they're getting ARPA money too. Can they offset that like with Greenwood's name or no?
They feel uh, this is just the first year of an increase for the line item. And I don't think the ARPA is going to be one time for their uh. Local funding. Could be part of the discussion. Oh, I did ask Kyle about. The tree removal and he felt twenty five thousand would be okay. I think they got a good handle on it. Civil division, that's nothing we can do. That's the social security expense and unemployment we've been quite lucky on. But the rest would be based on wages. Or selectman safety, there was an increase here. Oops. Boy. More. The outside service. So it was two ninety eight seventy. Found, we're running behind on that. Vin tech is no longer servicing, uh, providing uh EMTs. So we are working with LVA on that. And there was an increase in the hourly cost for that service for two EMTs from six AM to six PM. Seven days a week. So what you have there is LVA capital, which we agreed to in our, in our local agreement, eighty three hundred. Which they've used to uh help purchase their uh new ambulance. Uh, LVA contract, part of that agreement is that I think there's a three percent increase uh every year on that. So fifty six to seventy five. Banham is part of that contract. So they're at thirteen five oh six. The staffing, we fear for the six AM to six PM, two EMTs, two hundred and forty five thousand dollars for a total of three hundred and twenty three thousand eleven, one hundred and fifteen. And I know, I think Ken is bigger than us by a little bit, but they, their uh fire department didn't ask for their. To cover them for EMTs in their town and it was almost five hundred thousand dollars. So. I think we're doing okay here for EMS service in town of Morris for the price that we have. And then again, there's not a lot you can do about it because you try to go to a uh, a full company coming in and staffing it. It's going to be. Very expensive.
So right now LVA is covering, well, Vin tech if they've.
Yeah, Vin tech just stopped staffing.
They did, huh?
Yep. He's still in other towns.
Yeah.
He pulled out of a few of them. I think he is, I can't say why it happened, but I think in the EMS world, uh, it's very difficult to maintain staffing. Just because of the type of work it is and what they get paid.
But, you know. There was another service that we had in here.
EMR.
I can't, I think they were out of, uh, I see one out of, uh, Seymour.
Was that?
There was a company in Seymour that does. It was a company in Seymour that does EMS stuff, but I think they were here for.
Yeah.
A year or two.
I remember that, yeah.
I don't know if they're, I don't know if they're any cheaper or not.
We can look around too. And in fact, I will look around.
You know, I don't know if they were cheaper or not. I think they, I think they all know what the, the price is.
Also services needed, so prices accordingly.
Yeah, and the staffing, again, it's very difficult. Dog warden, uh, we did forget, or I did forget, I guess. Uh, to put in the two thousand dollars last year for the license fees. So that is back in there this year. That should be enough to cover it. Other than that, it's all about the same. Building inspector, uh, no big change, went up slightly. See where, oh, it's in the, uh, commissions. Fortunately, uh, that department is doing quite well and brought in a lot of revenue this year. Transfer station, we are going to see some, uh, increase mostly in recycling. We are quite fortunate with the contract that we have, uh, the towns that are with Mira, the trash to energy. Facility out in Hartford are looking at her and sixteen dollar tipping fees. We are seeing a lot less. And these prices should be good through the end of, uh, next fiscal year for us. So again, fortunately, we're not in the same boat as some other towns. And Greg's doing a good job down there. He keeps an eye on, uh. The tipping fees in.
Yeah, Greg seems to, I've talked to him a few times on recycling stuff and he seems to be checking into new things and. And sometime in the future, what we should do is get one of these companies in here to educate the public on recycling.
Yeah.
Because there are a lot of options that are open to us, but it just takes a lot of work.
Yeah. One of the big things, and it's difficult to do in a small town like this, is the food waste that adds about forty percent to the weight of your, uh, garbage. If you could pull the food waste out of the, uh, you could save forty percent, really.
Well, there, I'll, I'll, I talked to Greg about that. And there is a company and Hattam is using it right now. And what you do is the, you actually buy these, uh. Containers, I think they're twenty dollars for twenty five dollars. And they have a dumpster set up at the transfer station and these people are actually putting their food waste in there.
Yeah.
And Hattam, it's working out really well for them.
Litchfield's doing it.
Yeah, I heard Litchfield doing it.
I've talked to me about that.
But it's a lot of work.
It is a lot of work and you gotta get people educated and agreeable to.
They have to buy into the program.
It's, yes, and we don't have the restaurants like Litchfield has. I think they do pickup service at the restaurants. Uh, so it's one thing I think we really should look into if you could save a significant amount of money. Uh, senior center. I don't believe she asked too much here. Actually, she went down. We found that, uh. And I talked to Kristen about this was the, uh, cable. They didn't really need the cable television down there. Uh, you know, they show movies, stream them or they have old DVDs or whatever. So that was significant, uh, decrease. And I forgot to mention that with the fire company. We switched over to this, the CEN connected educational network for, uh, internet and the town hall library. And it costs us probably sixteen hundred dollars a year. But with that, we can switch the fire company over to the same network and they get it for free. So we're going to see. That line item decrease in the fire company budget just to cover some of the, uh, uh, hardware that we need. And so we're going to save quite a bit of money, at least a thousand twelve hundred dollars a year on internet. So that's really helped. And I think she didn't have much else to change. It's not going to matter too much. So as we said, we met the other day with Kyle and Rob. Talked about the, uh, CNR budget. This is not set in stone. We sat at the end of the meeting and said, what should we cut? And we kind of felt that may be a good discussion for the committee is, uh, Rob, Kyle, myself to have with Board of Finance. Also, obviously input from Court of Selectmen here. Engine three replacement, we're looking pushing that, adding a little money every year. Eventually, I mean, that engine's in nice condition. But eventually it's going to have to get replaced. How old is it now?
Thirty, thirty. Eighty seven.
So engine five, currently we have two hundred and fifty thousand kind of in the bank, uh, for that. Maybe add that two hundred thousand from ARPA, that's four hundred. We're looking at probably around seven hundred for, to replace five. If we do it before next January, yeah. Cause there's a twenty percent increase.
Yeah, but when you spend this two hundred thousand out of here, doesn't have to be spent in. The truck has to be bought in two years or so.
The, oh, of ARPA?
Yeah.
Uh, by twenty twenty six.
Twenty twenty six, yeah.
And what you can do is take that two hundred from ARPA and spend it, put it down payment on this. If it's under contract, you're good.
Now, can you use that money that was, it was money like a hundred and twenty five thousand in an account. At the fire department used for buying vehicles. Can that be applied to any of this truck?
The, uh, the account the fire company owns?
Yes.
Uh, that'd be up to discussion.
No, but I'm saying that, that's an option to it, right?
Oh, yeah.
I'm not saying, just looking for options.
Yeah. You know, maybe probably by the time we might get it, there may be some things that maybe need to be added to the engine. That could be funded also that way. And you'll see these other items on this list that with no monetary value next to them. It's because. For some funding, you need to have a, uh, capital list. And in order for project to qualify, it needs to be on that list.
Right.
Kind of like with low sub and things like that. So that's why we have the bath and showers on there. Hopefully that'll go through ARPA. Uh, that's at the firehouse. HVAC, same thing. Uh, backhoe replace, we talked to Kyle about that and they pulled. I think they started pulling the cab up on that and noticed quite a bit of corrosion. At first they thought it could probably last them a bit longer. But he did notice a lot of corrosion and issues that are starting with that machine. It's been well cared for, but it, it is getting fairly old. So they're looking at twenty twenty seven to replace it. So he felt keeping the thirty grand in there would be good for that. Culvert replacement, East Shore Road, that is coming up. We're hoping to qualify for the local bridge program, which is a fifty fifty, uh, funding for that. And hoping that the funding is, or the total cost is around four hundred thousand. So we, if we continue to fund that way, we are, we should be in good shape to get that project done hopefully soon. They're going to do the final phase of engineering on that. Town garage. There's the, uh, I believe it's the blowers, the heating system, the blowers that are up in the ceiling. Are extremely old, probably original to that part of the town garage and would like to start replacing them. And, uh, put in more modern, uh, blowers up there and that would be a start at ten thousand dollars. The big one there, well, two big ones, salt shed. This is something Kyle's been looking into, uh. Keeping the original salt shed that, that's there for equipment, uh, storage. And putting up a salt shed structure like the town of Litchfield has, but I think smaller. Between the town garage and the salt shed where the sand, sand pile is right now. He feels we could buy the salt, save, save money, buy the salt, uh, in the summer, probably August. Get all the salt that we need for the entire season at one time. That way with these supply chain issues that we're having, uh, that they'd be all set through the winter. He feels it is a money saver over time. Plus, we also need the extra stores to keep equipment out of the sun and rain and everything else. Fuel tank system and another money saving option here, hopefully. Would, would put the, uh, fuel depot down at the highway garage. Uh, it would be gas and diesel. Right now we pay at the pump for gas, so we're paying all the taxes. It's a significant savings if we don't have to pay those taxes when we buy it in bulk as municipality. Also, we can, uh, there'd be a fob for each vehicle that will have access to these pumps. And so you'll have to, you know, put your card in or swipe it and then probably punch in the information. Like you do at the gas pump now with your card. So it tracks the usage per vehicle. So you know what you got, what's going out. Uh, municipal, uh, building capital maintenance, it's been quite useful. We have a lot of work to do on these buildings. Uh, senior center is kind of showing some larger issues. This building probably needs the masonry waterproof along with the firehouse. It seems there's always a use for that, those funds. Fire pond dredging, we didn't do any last year, but we also have a slightly larger fire pond work job to do. So they'd like to see that continue to build. They'll use it this year. Didn't use it last year because it rained so much. They'll use it this year and just ten thousand every year to keep maintaining all the various ponds throughout the town. Here's, you know, it's an option for a new video security system at Town Beach. We got a quote for about twenty thousand dollars. Uh, the current system there is antiquated. Uh, it's very hard to make out any images. We did have vandalism down there last year. We'd hope that this would help. And again, some of these things can, will probably go away during the talks, uh. Moving on to municipal docks, we had a quote for about sixty thousand. I'd like to get that committee together this winter and have them talk about it. And I think it's an option for the town. People are still interested in it, but it may not happen this summer. I mean, there's only so much we can fund. You can see the bottom line, so five hundred and eighty six thousand. Can't do it all. Uh, and again, this is something I personally I'd like to see, but it probably won't happen is the, uh, handicap docks. The, uh, town boat launch, which be a stretch docks going out the right side as you look out at the lake. So you can put your boat in, pull it over next to this dock, have a ramp up to the dock so people can get over and get into their, uh, to their boat. Sidewalk replacement, this is at the senior center. It's something I think we really have to do. It's, uh. We've been working on it over the years and there's a stretch of sidewalks there that are in poor condition and need to be replaced. And dishwasher replacement, that's at the senior center that current, it's a commercial dishwasher. I'm not sure on the exact, how exact this number is. This is something that Kristen came up with. I think she talked to a vendor. But, uh, it is a commercial dishwasher that has to meet the torrential area health guidelines. And, uh. That was about it, but again, it adds up to five hundred and eighty six thousand dollars. We just don't have that money too.
So I, I just had a couple of things on the fuel system. Now, were you going to combine the firehouse fuel system with the town fuel system? So you just have one, one card reader for everything, which is a good idea.
Yeah.
It all a little tougher for you guys to fill off going.
It's okay.
Yeah, but, uh, and it gets that out of there and gives you a little more room.
Yeah. Yeah, definitely.
Yeah. And the other thing was. When they talk about fire trucks and equipment, uh, big ticket items, were they? Now, this is something you'll have to see with the board of finance. Are they thinking about, uh, bonding these items or? Going through like the fire companies where you can purchase a truck through their arrangement, loan arrangements on fire trucks.
That is something Rob would be looking into if.
I've looked, they have, they have, their programs like how you buy a new car.
Right.
Call lease purchase. You can do a lease purchase, buy into the, a lease. And you get a new fire truck like every, I don't know, ten, fifteen years and you just keep paying and paying and paying and paying. Or they have a normal, like, they call it a lease purchase, but it's just like, um, like we go to purchase a new car. And you pay out the, the loan and buy, and then the loan, which you can set up for like five years, ten years, fifteen years. About twenty years, something like that. At the end of that time, you own the truck.
Right.
They do.
So it's just an option that.
But there's interest.
Yeah.
You know, you're paying interest too, because it's not, tho- those programs aren't funded really through the manufacturer. It's just like going to a, a, you buy a new car. A lot of times you don't buy it through Chevy, you buy it through like TD Bank or something like that, where, you know, the interest rates aren't that good.
Okay. All right. And the other thing is. Did you have any money in? Cause you talked about a resident trooper.
Right. I didn't put anything in there now. Uh, I felt. That's something they could pull off fund balance if the town decides they do want to go in that direction.
Okay. I was just curious how they were going to fund it.
Yeah, just because it's kind of up in the air. We're going to have the, uh, informational forum next Thursday.
Yeah.
A night. And see how the town feels.
Okay.
I, I've been hearing different things, back and forth, both sides.
Same.
Uh, see how they feel and then the board of finance can decide how to fund it. You know? Uh, probably looking at seventy to eighty thousand, uh, depending on the, how much experience the trooper has. How many years? And that's half the cost. I guess that's it. If you have any questions, you want to go back to anything, uh, just got to remind everyone, this is a draft. It's a fluid budget. It's going to change. Uh, there could be some numbers that come in still that may change this. Obviously the wages will change it, maybe insurance numbers. And I think there's a lot of discussion we're going to have with, uh, Board of Finance, see where they want to go and how they want to, how they want to do it.
I think that it's important for the Board of Finance to look at that alongside the ARPA money. Cause like if we're going to be investing down the recreational fields and stuff and not put cameras up, like that's just, it's just foolish. Like that's just going to keep happening every year and more and more stuff.
I am hoping that, you know, we can find some funding for the cameras, but yeah, I think they have to look at everything.
Yeah.
ARPA, what's available, might go towards that area and other areas.
Put money there, we have to protect it.
Yeah.
Same everywhere, but.
Do you need a motion to send this draft to the Board of Finance?
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made and seconded.
It's a good budget. There's nothing in there. I don't think that is, uh, even remotely controversial, really.
I think we're doing the right, I think we're.
Fair.
Tom, you put the budget together. We reviewed it. Now we send it to the Board of Finance, let them.
Yeah.
Tweak it and then let the town vote on it.
I mean, I've had conversation with conversations with most of the department heads and, uh, to discuss it, what they presented to me. See where they're at and that's what I put down and, yeah, of course, Finance, send it down.
As good as I think it can be, so.
Well, it's, it's never good, but.
Yeah, we do have public comment. We do have Joel there to see if he wants to comment. He didn't fall asleep. Joel, I don't know if you can hear me. Was there a? Maybe.
Maybe he fell asleep.
Walked away.
He doesn't have these frigid temperatures keeping him up like we do.
Fuel, right, Rob?
Cold in here, it's freezing.
That's the temperature over there.
You're, you don't like this temperature. You, you like it hot, yeah.
That's why.
Looks like a seventy five degree temperature.
Oh, that's why I have a wood stove going all the time in my house.
Like this, oh, I'm like, cut this over, I can't stand it.
I can't take the cold.
Uh, next time we'll warm it up here.
Yeah, please, thank you.
Summer, uh, is there a motion to adjourn at five ten?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
This is our longest meeting.